Allegiance and invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you saying, "Lord, thank you for another day that we've never seen before. We ask for your grace and your mercy to cover us in your blood, Lord. We ask for direction and understanding. We ask for all these blessings in your son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen." Can you remain standing, please? Ms. Willamette Dur was very, very dear to me. She passed away. She'll be funeralized on Friday at New Community Baptist Church. Ms. Dur was very, very active in the East Hammond community and did a number of things. As a kid at Brook's house, she used to read books to me and a number of organizations. Laura Passmore Federated Club, she was very active in where we had breakfast on Saturday mornings. And she was just instrumental in a number of things getting accomplished in my younger years. And she had ninety-six beautiful years. And I just thank God for her being in my life as a young man and giving me direction. And she would truly be missed. And also, to the Whitelow family, who I am close to as well. And the young man, Putten's son, was tragically murdered this weekend. And it's very emotional and it's a hurting feeling. And I wish they would actually just put the guns down because it's really sad for a parent to go see their loved one deceased in that form or fashion. So I ask that you pray for their families. And just a moment of silence, please. Thank you so much.
Roll call, clerk Loach.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Galwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warpo.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Markovich.
Here. Nine here, zero absent. Reading in a minute. Councilman Spitali.
President, make a motion to accept the minutes from October twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, be placed on file, please.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson, that minutes be placed on file. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those ayes have it. Public hearings, we have none. Communications?
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. President.
Approval of claims, Councilman Warpo.
I make a motion that we accept the claims as submitted, beginning with claims dated ten twenty-five nineteen and ending with claims dated ten thirty nineteen. Claim fifty-eight seventy-five through claim sixty forty and claim sixty forty-two through claim sixty-one seventy inclusive, in the amount of three million five hundred and sixty-two thousand four hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-three cents. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warpo, second by Councilwoman Vines. Our final passage and adoption of the claims. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I make a motion that we remove claim sixty forty-one. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Higgs to remove claim number sixty forty-one. Is there a second?
It's not in there.
It's on the claim sheet.
There's been a new claim sheet submitted.
I didn't get it.
It should be on your front desk or whatever.
All right.
The new claim sheet, it's not in there. Any other discussion?
I didn't get a copy.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs. Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes. Eight in favor and one absent. Public hearings, we have none. Communications? 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 Next item is committee reports.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
At this time, I'd like to read the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. On Friday, November fifteenth, community watch at Silver Birch, that's at fifty-six twenty Soul, that will be at two P.M. Tuesday, November nineteenth, the East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet at six thirty P.M. at the Ophelia Steen Center. Wednesday, November sixth, Edison Community Watch will meet at Edison School, that begins at six thirty P.M. Edison on the Road will meet Friday, November eighth, one P.M. at the Golden Manor Senior Building. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet Tuesday, November twelfth, six thirty P.M. at the VFW on Holman Avenue. Irving Community Watch will meet Friday, November eighth, nine fifteen A.M. at Irving School, and that is a bilingual program. And Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, November fourteenth, six thirty P.M. at Calumet College. I invite everyone to come out to one of these meetings. You will find out a lot of information, not only what's going on in your neighborhood, but also citywide, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee reports is closed. Ordinance for third and final passage, we have none. Item nine, introductions of ordinances.
Item eight, ordinance nineteen dash twenty-six, sponsored by Councilman Spitali. An ordinance creating a new fund, number two four three, and to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department grant fund for two thousand twenty.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Move for first and second reading. Refer to council as a whole, with a public hearing set for twelve sixteen nineteen and a meeting set for the same date at five o'clock.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Higgs. First and second reading, council as a whole with a public hearing on December sixteen at five P.M. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Warpo.
I will be, I know on the agenda, as you may have, it says a public hearing for December ninth, two thousand nineteen, but under new and unfinished business, I will be making a motion because of the way the holidays fall again, that the meeting on December ninth be canceled, and we will have one meeting on Monday, December sixteenth. That's why the public hearing differs from the time on the agenda.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
And also cancel the December twenty-third meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
That'll be under new and unfinished business, though.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's see here. So that was item A.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Not a roll call.
No, it's introduction of ordinances, correct. Item A.
Motion to adopt.
Is there a motion to amend?
No, I thought, I didn't think the council voted on it yet.
No, well, we didn't. We're just still in a discussion. Any discussion?
I make a motion, second, one of order.
The motion's been made. Mr. President?
Councilman Warpo.
The motion's been made and seconded it, and under discussion, I don't know if we have to amend the agenda because the agenda has the public hearing set for December ninth. The meeting will actually, in new and unfinished business, a motion will be made for that meeting to be scheduled on the sixteenth.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
The public hearing is not listed on the ordinance, so I don't see a need to amend it.
Any other discussion? Well, introduction of the ordinance with a public hearing on the sixteenth, that probably should take care of it then. Okay? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those ayes have it.
Item B, ordinance nineteen dash twenty-seven, an ordinance creating a new fund, number two four four, and to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department grant fund for two thousand twenty.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Move for first and second reading. Refer to council as a whole. Public hearing set for twelve sixteen nineteen, and also a meeting at five o'clock on the same day.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Higgs. Nineteen twenty-seven passed on first and second reading. Refer to council as a whole with a public hearing on the sixteenth at five o'clock. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those ayes have it.
Item C, ordinance nineteen dash twenty-eight, sponsored by Councilmen Torres and Warpo. An ordinance to amend ordinances, forty-six thirty-three, forty-six seventy-three, forty-nine ninety-four, sixty thirty-five, seventy-six fifty-seven, seventy-six sixty-one, eighty-four thirty-five, eighty-six twelve, eighty-seven eighteen, ninety-eighty-one, ninety-two forty-nine, ninety-two fifty-eight, also known as section ninety-four point zero nine zero, ninety-four zero nine one, and one six zero zero three of the Hammond Municipal Code, as it pertains to the enforcement of high grass and weeds, declaration of same as nuisances, and allowing the inspections department to abate within ten days' notice.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warpo.
Move for first and second reading. Refer to council as a whole on eleventh, November eighteenth at five fifteen P.M.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warpo, second by Councilman Spitali. Nineteen dash twenty-eight passed on first and second reading. Refer to council as a whole with a committee meeting at five fifteen on the eighteenth. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Warpo.
What this ordinance basically does is exactly what it says in the title. I know when we get complaints of high grass, weeds, whatever, it usually takes about forty-five days from when they're cited to actually get the cut and clean order and all that. And this ordinance actually is within what other communities and state law allows, and it cuts that time to down to around ten days.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I know Councilman Warpo stated that other states and, I guess, other cities have similar ordinances in place. Can you give me, identify some of those cities that do?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Jaime.
Good evening, council. My name's Jaime Prieto. I'm the code enforcement commissioner. A lot of cities that we looked up, such as South Bend, West Lafayette, Muncie, cities that have same population as we do, are using this ten-day ordinance to abate and cut the grass there. So we're just trying to get on track with other cities in the state, so that way we can keep our neighborhoods beautiful.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Just to mention, though, since my tenure on the council, constantly I reported different properties that had issues in terms of high grass. So that is a problem. However, for some reason or another, they weren't getting cut. And I can understand the fact of making the ordinance or making it ten days, but I think this, it's gonna be difficult for some people that don't have the sufficient funds available to actually get it done in ten days. That might be a problem. Maybe fifteen, but ten, that's quick.
Well, at that point, once we get a cut, they actually have a chance to come in and appeal it and pay whatever we, our services, as far as vendors, charge. So that's all part of the process.
And most of the vendors, what do they normally charge, you know?
It varies, depending on the lot size. This year, we had three different prices per lot, you know, for three different sized lots. I think we're gonna be upping that price next year. It's not gonna be much, but I can't give you an exact number right now as to what we're gonna be charging next year.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
It varies. Yeah, it does vary every year.
Ever had.
Including vacant lots, I wanna say anywhere between four hundred to five hundred.
That's every week?
I'm sorry?
That's every week?
No, our vendors, our vendors go out there every three to four weeks for a cut.
Are those vacant lots?
Most of them are. Some are houses that are just abandoned, left in foreclosure or whatnot.
Mr. President. I just know, in the short time I've been on the council, that's one of the biggest complaints I get as far as tall grass and high weeds. And when the people complain, and I say, "I'll get code enforcement out there and they'll take care of it," the number one complaint I hear is, "I don't need to get grass cut in July, I need it cut now." And this shortens that forty-five day window down to ten days.
I just talked to Jaime, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. President. I just talked to Jaime about the percentage of his cuts that are actually occupied, addressing Councilman Higgs' concern. He said it's ten percent. I mean, for the most part, these are houses where people moved out and they just never made plans for cutting the grass when they're gone. And it could be there. And a lot of them are repeat customers, right? You go back season after season. But this ordinance is something we've followed. Obviously, we're very careful about going on private property. We've seen one of our colleagues get in trouble for cutting trees on private property, and we don't wanna repeat the same mistakes that we've learned from in the past. So we've been very careful and conscientious about not going on private property in situations like this. And it's frustrating for the complainer who calls in to Councilman Rakels and says, "Councilman Rakels, my neighbor's not cutting his grass." Rakels would tell us. Jaime goes out there, puts the green sticker on the house, and nothing happens for six weeks, seven weeks. And in the meantime, the grass is growing higher, and the person that made the complaint thinks Councilman Rakels blew him off, and thinks we blew him off, and we're just waiting for the red tape to clear up. This cuts the red tape. This is a ten-day period. We'll go on there, we'll cut it, we'll charge a heck of a lot for cutting. It's way cheaper to do it yourself, a couple hundred bucks, two fifty. So it's way easier for the homeowner to do it themselves, but this cuts through all that red tape. It's gonna help all of you and us, you know, so that when somebody makes a complaint to Councilman Rakels, it's more like three weeks instead of six or seven weeks. But we do need the permission before we could do that.
I have a question if it's, if they're being rented, and they're not cutting long. What do you do then?
Good question.
Do you have to go to the owner? How's that work?
Yeah, correct. If it's a rental, depending on what the lease states, sometimes the renters are responsible for the grass. If it's not on the lease, then the owners are responsible for the grass. We always go for the owner of the property. That's who we always cite. Every citation we send out is always to the owner of that property. Well, if they don't wanna pay the fine, I'm sure they're gonna, they're gonna get to it as soon as possible.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Yeah, obviously, I strongly support this ordinance because Councilman Warpo stated it brings down the forty-five day window to ten days. And that is one of the biggest complaints I get during the summer, and especially with landlords that, for some reason, renters don't feel they have to cut the grass, so it's up to the landlord, and they just let it go. And in forty-five days, it almost becomes a marsh out there. So I expect the colleagues to please support this ordinance.
Do you ever have?
Any other discussion?
I know a few people that have, that live in the home. Next door to them is a vacant lot. They claim that they've asked the city if they could buy that lot because they've been cutting it. Does that ever come about?
It does come about. We, what they can do is do a FOIA request, a request for information to see who the owner of that lot is. In many cases, these lots are not owned by the city. So we would direct them to Lake County if they request information from us to see who the owner is. If that gets passed, then, you know, we can give them that information.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item D, ordinance nineteen dash twenty-nine, sponsored by Councilmen Torres and Warpo. An ordinance to amend ordinance seventy-one eighty-three, also known as section ten point nine eight of the Hammond Municipal Code, as it pertains to the creation of an ordinance violation bureau.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warpo.
I move ordinance nineteen twenty-nine be passed on first and second reading. Move to council as a whole on November eighteenth at five fifteen P.M.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warpo, second by Councilman Higgs. Nineteen twenty-nine passed on first and second reading. Refer to council as a whole in a meeting on November eighteenth at five fifteen. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Warpo.
What this ordinance does, it creates a part, I don't know the exact word I'm looking for, a way for our county, the city clerk to, for people that have city or certain violations, and they wanna plead guilty and not have to go to court, or not plead guilty, but just pay whatever fines there are. They can just come in and pay the clerk's office rather than having to go to court. And it also allows for the current process of showing that they're in compliance when they're cited for something, rather than having to go through the whole court, waiting to go through the whole court process. I think I got that right.
Mr. President, this is an idea, we were approached by city clerk Bob Golick about this idea, and I think it's a great idea. You know, when we first eliminated the Hammond City Court, there was talk about setting up a, what was the name of the board? Yeah, what was the name of it?
Ordnance Court.
Or Ordnance Court. But it would basically been a second court. We would've still had to have files, we would've still had to do court-type proceedings. It'd be like a Board of Public Works, but we wouldn't have a judge. We would just have three judges that determine ordinance violations. And it sounded like we were gonna get rid of a court and set up another court, just to deal with ordinances. And we started questioning that when clerk Golick approached us and came up with the idea where the city clerk could act as like sort of a clearinghouse for the settlements, so to speak. You know, if you're cited for, maybe you don't have dog tags, right? And you get the citation that says, "If you get dog tags, no case will be filed." So you go to the city clerks, and you prove to the city clerk, "Hey, I got my dog tags," after I got cited. And the city clerk would say, "Oh, yep, there's the dog tags. All right, ordinance is dismissed." And if we do it this way, then we'll never have to file a case in court. We're never gonna have to pay the court costs. We're not gonna have to go through that whole process of chasing a person down for their tags. So I thought it was a great idea, and that's why we're supporting this ordinance, where we basically allow the city clerk and his staff to try to clear these ordinance cases up before they're filed in two hundred Russell Street. I think it's a great move, you know, that's why we put it in writing. And I'm probably missing a lot of the details in this, but basically, it allows us to try to clear a lot of these cases up. For instance, my wife just got a ticket in downtown Chicago. I'm sure she appreciates me talking about it. It was a parking violation. She parked in the wrong spot on the wrong day, and the city of Chicago sent her a ticket in the mail. And then I complained for like fifteen minutes, but ultimately, we decided, "We're not gonna go contest this parking violation. We're just gonna pay the fine," and they vacate the whole thing. I think that's what the clerk's trying to do here, is a lot of people are just gonna say, "You're right. I should've got my dog tags." This is, I'm gonna go into the city clerk and say, "Here's my dog tag. Sorry about that, clerk Golick." And he's gonna say, "Great. Case is dismissed." So instead of setting up a whole different court system, this allows us to use the employees we already have in the clerk's office to just clear up a lot of these cases and maybe file far fewer, you know, legal cases resulting from ordinance violations.
And to be clear, that fine stays entirely within the city, correct?
Yeah, if it's clear, if it's a compliance issue, sometimes, okay, so if there's an ordinance fine that they're facing, and they're, maybe you're in your backyard burning a fire pit, and smoke gets in a neighbor's yard, and they file a case against you, and they say, "That's a hundred and fifty dollar violation," and you're like, "Well, there's smoke all over the place." Instead of going to court and fighting this, I'm just gonna show up to clerk Golick's office and pay the hundred and fifty dollars, 'cause I don't have time to go to court. Yeah, they could do that. And instead of us, in that case, we get a hundred percent of the fine, instead of paying court costs and forcing them to go downtown and show up for court and stuff like that, it could all be handled here locally. And if they wanna fight it, then they have that option. They'll go to two hundred Russell Street, right in downtown Hammond, and fight it out there. And it's out of our hands at that point. And we'll lose court costs and things of that nature. But I think it's a great way to take advantage of our existing employees in a good way. When I say take advantage, I didn't mean to take advantage like that. I'm just saying, I think we have these employees, let's try to clear up these cases before they result in litigation.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Plus, if they comply, there might be no charge or fee at all.
Absolutely, Councilman.
I think it saves the offender a lot of court costs or whatever, any other fees that the court might impose if he chose that route. So I think it's a great ordinance.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those ayes have it.
Was that the last one?
Next item is...
Item E, an ordinance by the petitioner La hacienda Azteca LLC. An ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the city of Hammond for zoning purposes and amending ordinance number eight five one four, which is an ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the city of Hammond, including the regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with a comprehensive land use plan as amended for properties commonly known as eleven forty-one One Hundred and Fiftieth Street and eleven forty-seven One Hundred and Fiftieth Street in Hammond.
Is there anybody here from La hacienda Azteca LLC to represent this ordinance?
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
I, this ordinance does not require a sponsor, but I'll proudly put my name on it.
Mr. President.
Excuse me, Mr. Councilman. I'm not done yet. This is just hacienda Azteca, expanding. Couple of council meetings ago, he was here, he expanded to the north. Now he's expanding west. He's gonna expand, he bought an additional abandoned property that was located just west of him, and he's gonna expand his restaurant, add additional footing. And then the remaining of the lot, he's gonna extend ten spaces of parking. So it's an improvement to the city. It's a quality restaurant that is fastly growing. He's been there for nine years. And it's gonna improve his location, his business, and it's gonna help the city. Is that right?
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. President. We need a motion to adopt this ordinance. Is there a motion by anybody to adopt this ordinance?
Mr. President. I move for the adoption of this ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Torres, second by Councilman Higgs. Now, discussion?
Mr. President.
I'm sorry, there.
I'd like to point out to the council that this zoning change, it's gone through, the changes being proposed, it's gone through planning and zoning, and has been approved by both. Although I haven't been to this restaurant since its latest management change, I've heard nothing but great things about it. And I think that having another restaurant, and we should do everything we can to have another successful restaurant. And I, you know, for what it's worth, the administration totally supports this. Through, we've already done so between BZI and between planning, so.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
In all that discussion, I was trying to bring it to your attention that in reality, it needed to be a motion placed on the floor before all the discussion took place. But however, we're moving right along.
Thank you. So there's a motion by Councilman Torres, second by Councilman Higgs, for first and second reading. Refer to council as a whole?
This is to adopt.
Ordinance. We gonna do it on three readings tonight? Or this has been before as before?
No, no.
Okay, so you're planning on adopting this in three readings tonight, then?
Point of order, Mr. President. That would be the decision of the That would be the decision of the councilman if, if the other colleagues wanted to. But first, you gotta pass it on first and second reading.
I understand that, that's what I'm trying to do. That's why I asked if it was gonna refer to a, a committee.
Uh, Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
I move that, uh, ordinance nineteen thirty be, um, passed for first and second reading.
Most by Councilman Torres, second by Councilman Higgs, that nineteen dash thirty be passed on first and second reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Will that be put in council as a whole, or any?
He'd enlist the committee.
Oh, okay. That's fine with me, whatever you choose.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify, well, I'm sorry, roll call.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes.
Markovich.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero absent. The chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warpo.
I make a motion, we suspend the rules for final passage and adoption of this ordinance, or this ordinance.
Motion by Councilman Warpo.
Second.
Second by Councilman Higgs to suspend the rules. Is there any discussion? Any discussion?
Call for the vote.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes. Motion to suspend the rules passes nine in favor, zero absent. Now, final passage and adoption of nineteen dash thirty. Is there any discussion? Any discussion?
Yeah, he needs to make a point of order.
Motion, is there?
Mr. President, Mr. President.
Take your point of order, Councilman Higgs.
He needs to make a motion for final passage of this particular ordinance.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warpo.
I make a motion that we, final passage and adoption of ordinance nineteen dash thirty. I didn't have my glasses on, but I saw it. Nineteen dash thirty.
Motion by Councilman Warpo, second by Councilman Spitali, for final passage and adoption of nineteen dash thirty. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes. Motion passes nine in favor, zero absent.
President Markovich, that concludes introduction of ordinances.
Resolutions, we have none. New and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Warpo.
As I stated earlier, I wanna make a motion that the December ninth meeting and the December twenty-third meeting be canceled. And in its place, we meet on December sixteenth. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warpo to cancel November ninth.
The December?
December ninth and the December twenty-third meeting, and make it December sixteen. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Second.
Councilman Higgs. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion?
Call for the vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. President. I also am making a motion that at four forty-five on November eighteenth, the council holds a special meeting to discuss, to discuss personnel and legal issues.
Second.
Second by Councilman Warpo, second by, I'm sorry, motion by Councilman Warpo, second by Councilman Higgs, to have an exec, uh, executive, a special meeting at four forty-five on November?
That would be an executive meeting.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, what?
That would be an executive session.
I would suggest maybe, uh, we have, need more time, maybe four o'clock, or four thirty, or four fifteen.
Okay, we can make it four thirty.
Four thirty. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Have it. Any other new unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Seeing that we're coming to the end of, uh, my tenure on the council, I just wanted to thank my constituents. I don't know if I'll be at the next meeting or not, but I want to personally thank them for all their years of support, those that supported me and those that didn't. Uh, it was a very learning experience, and I had an opportunity to learn a lot and get a lot accomplished in my tenure of being on the council. I will continue to work and do what's necessary for the third district. And now, I guess I won't have to deal with some of the things that I had to deal with. But however, God is so good. He will not put on you more than you can bear. So, I just thank God for that. Thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Urban Park, uh, finally got started this weekend, and is, uh, one million, one and a half million dollar commitment. Uh, there're gonna be improvements in the basketball court, dog park, uh, basketball, uh, courts are gonna be improved. I mean, the baseball field's gonna be improved, uh, walk paths and provide a little green space for leisure time. I wanna thank the mayor, he, uh, committed most of the money of that million, uh, million and a half. He committed a million, and, uh, the district committed a half a million. But, um, I am not happy with, uh, oh, and it's gonna be completed in spring. They just started the digging now, but, uh, it's not gonna be completed till spring. But I am disappointed with, um, um, the progress of it. It's supposed to have been started back in August, and we had a little bit delay by engineering department. It shouldn't have been, but it was, 'cause they had a two-year notice on this. By my account, they had a two-year notice. Um, not also happy with them with, uh, the lighting program just got approved. The street lighting program for the ornamental lighting just got approved. Uh, last, uh, Board of Works meeting, and also the side, sidewalk program got approved. And I doubted if the sidewalk program's gonna be completed. So, there's a little bit done in the district, and I apologize to the residents that were promised this during the, the summer. The mayor and I talked about it, and there's gonna be some improvements in the future. But anyway, I just wanted to apologize to the second district that we didn't get what was planned and promised on a timely basis. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mayor.
Uh, Mr. President, I wanted to start off and point out to the council, you had close to a hundred and fifty people viewing on Facebook Live. I think that's really cool, so I wanted to say, I think that's really cool, that you get so many people to watch and participate in your council meetings. I wanted to congratulate you for that. Start off, first off, saying that. Secondly, I wanna remind everybody that's out there watching, and everybody that's listening, that we have a veterans parade coming this Saturday. We have hundreds of people that are gonna be there as part of the parade, and it's really embarrassing in Hammond when there's more people in the parade than there's people watching the parade. So, please, mark your calendars. Kicks off, is it ten o'clock it kicks off on Saturday morning? Thank you. Kicks off ten o'clock Saturday morning. Uh, it's usually done within forty-five minutes to an hour, and then they have a really nice ceremony right afterwards at the park on a Hundred and Seventy-third and Kennedy. So, please, mark your calendars for Saturday. We got the Lima Lima Flight Team coming. We have hundreds and hundreds of veterans that are gonna be marching and come out and show you're proud of them by participating in Saturday in the annual veterans parade in Hammond. Uh, the weather's supposed to be nice, not super cold, not rainy. So, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Mr. Pres.
Councilman Warpo.
Um, continuing under new and unfinished business, I want to announce a meeting that we're having at the Gene Shepherd Center on November nineteenth. I know a lot of the residents had some concerns over the traffic flow in the di, in their neighborhood with the new hockey rink coming in, and we've come up with a pretty good plan between engineering, the mayor, and myself. And, um, we will have a meeting on, again, November nineteenth at the Shepherd Center at six P.M. concerning the traffic flow issues that we plan on addressing once the hockey rink opens.
Any other new unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I would like to add to what the mayor said. Uh, the mayor himself is a veteran, Councilman Spitali is a veteran, Councilman Torres, and myself. And, uh, I would also like to add that, uh, the grand marshal for this parade on Saturday, November ninth, is our own chief, John Doty. He's an Army veteran, so I naturally like him. Uh, anyway, uh, if you know a veteran, or if you just wanna, you know, say thank you to veterans, come on out Saturday, steps off at ten o'clock from Oltcott and around a Hundred and Seventy-third. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Just to echo the sentiments of the mayor, um, I had the opportunity to, in my tenure of being on the council, to name a street out after one of the veterans, and, and that was Mr. Lakeos. And his, um, block, where you can see just adjacent to Holman Avenue, was named after him, who served our country for a number of years. So, that's what it takes to be in tune with the community. So, he's well missed and loved.
Any other new unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kowinski.
In keeping with the Veterans Day theme, I wanna thank the Whiting Lions Club and all the residents that came out to the war memorial for bricklaying ceremonies, uh, Saturday at Forsyth Park. It was a very nice event and well attended, and I wanna thank especially Andy Deibel from the Whiting Lions Club for coordinating and emceeing the event.
Any other new unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Raycos.
I wanna, uh, thank the, uh, street department and, and the city, and HC three. Two-thirds of the, uh, flags are now flying on the light post on Kennedy Avenue. You'll be able to see them at the park on Saturday. But they'll be, uh, all the way down. They'll be finishing up the west side of the street tomorrow, but we have flags flying from our street poles, or s, or streetlight poles on Kennedy Avenue. It's been something that people have been asking for a long time, and we finally got it done. And I wanna thank the city, the mayor, and HC three. Thank you.
I just wanna point out.
Uh, go ahead, Mayor.
You're gonna do the obvious?
Go ahead.
I'd also like to remind everybody tomorrow's election day. We haven't said it yet, so please go out there and vote. Make sure your right, uh, your right to vote is exercised, so don't forget tomorrow's election day.
Also, I know there's a couple of new faces here at the council meeting. If you plan on speaking before the council, we have a sign-in sheet for public expression. So, if anybody would like to address the council, you can do this now, or whatever, if you plan on speaking. No takers? Alright, so new and unfinished business is over. We have public expression. We have one person, number twenty-five, George Stoya. Passed. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Pres, President, I make a motion that we adjourn from this meeting.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by, second. Councilman Spitali, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Ayes have it.